Good evening, this budget hearing is now in session. Thank you. This session will have a feature presentation from Department of Planning with subsequent testimony. Director Stosur, if you could introduce your team and then provide for us maybe about 10-minute presentation and then we'll open it up to questions.
Very good, thank you, Councilman.
And we've been joined by Karan Banks from the Mayor's Office as he enters and exits. And Councilwoman Shannon Snead.
Hello, Councilwoman, great to see you. Thanks for this opportunity. And to start with introducing the staff, I'll start at the far end here. Sarah Perrinellum, our Chief of Comprehensive Planning. Kristin Ahern, our Capital Budget Lead. Jamie Kramer, our Fiscal Officer. Lori Feinberg, Assistant Director. Andrati, Sustainability Coordinator. Holly Freistat, our Food Policy Director. And Walde Ararsa, our Land Use and Urban Design Division Chief. Also Eric Holcomb, Executive Director for CHAP. And Bob Pipick is the Division Chief for Research and Strategic Planning.
Thank you. And so we've also been joined by Council President Young and Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the panel. So we in the Planning Department have been working very hard to implement our mission, which is to build Baltimore as a diverse, sustainable, and thriving city of neighborhoods and as the economic and cultural driver for the region. We have a number of recent accomplishments that I won't go into detail, but we have provided you a recent annual report that gives all the highlights. But one of the big accomplishments has certainly is about to take effect on Monday, June 5th, and that's the passage of Transform Baltimore, the new city zoning code.
We're being sued as she asks for a stay.
I'm being optimistic. Hopefully there will be a ruling on Friday that keeps us going forward. But our presentation this evening features four key services plus our Administration Division, and I'll also provide a brief overview of the Fiscal 18 Capital Budget. Essentially, our general fund budget of 5.5 million maintains our existing level of So our first service is development oversight and project support under the vibrant economy outcome, and this service helps guide development projects, large and small, successfully through the city approval process. And with the new zoning code coming online, new tools to enhance the quality of our built environment are going to be implemented, including a design manual, a landscape manual, and site plan review standards. So we're excited to hopefully be increasing design quality throughout the city. Since 2010, over 20,000 new residential units have been completed or are under construction in the city and have been through our process. There are 15 funded positions in this service, seven of which are planning commissioners who receive a stipend, so that leaves eight actual planning department staff. And I'll just note that one of the indicators here for the number of building permits reviewed within 48 hours shows a little bit of a modest decline as a target, and that is due to Transform Baltimore and kind of the adjustments that we're anticipating might need to be made as people, both staff and developers, get used to the process and the new regulations. But hopefully we will meet or exceed those targets. The next service here is historic preservation under sustainable infrastructure, and this staff serves the CHAP Commission and provides building permit and tax credit reviews in our historic districts. The number of positions for Fiscal 18 in this service remains constant at six. We do have several new local historic designations in process, and that's a change because we've been able to add a staff member in recent years, so we're able to pick up again on district designations. So those include Federal Hill, portions of the West Side Downtown, and Charles North are all in various stages. For performance indicators, there is some fluctuation here as well. The number of preliminary reviews completed for tax credit within 30 days had the actual for 2016 dipped a little bit to 249, and our target for 18 is at 300. And basically, this is due to the number, total number of preliminary reviews have declined. There were only 362 applications that received preliminary approval total last year. But the number of final certifications, which is the more important step in the process, getting to the finish line, actually increased by double, and that's not captured as a particular performance measure at this moment. And then the minor fluctuations in properties with local or national designations, that's driven by a little bit fewer number of national registered districts being pursued in Baltimore at this time. But that can kind of ebb and flow, and as I mentioned, we are picking up the local districts The next service is comprehensive planning and research management, and this service features all of our neighborhood planning activities, the capital improvement program, as well as our research and GIS mapping functions. Staffing for next fiscal year increases by one slot to 17 positions, and that's due to an internal transfer of staff from one division to this one. And this team works very closely with housing and community groups to target available state and local demolition, blight elimination, and greening dollars across neighborhoods. Everything from community meetings to the GIS mapping and the cost estimating that go into developing those budgets for blight elimination and greening. The recommended budget for the special fund under this service includes 1.2 million in Pimlico Impact Aid for community projects in the upcoming year. Again, looking at the performance measures, the external stakeholders engaged, we just started measuring that in Fiscal 16, and we did not expect that it was going to be as high as it turned out to be, nearly 8,000 different stakeholders engaged in various means. And before that number was established, we had to pick the target for 17, and again, we just didn't realize just how many folks we were engaging. So that's the change there. Our fourth service, Planning for a Sustainable Baltimore, also under sustainable infrastructure. This service is home to the city's Office of Sustainability and our Food Policy Program, and it also conducts required environmental reviews for development projects, floodplain, forest conservation, and critical area. Staffing remains at 12 positions for next year, but I am very pleased to announce that in mid-June, we will welcome a new Sustainability Director, Lisa McNeeley, who is joining us from the University of California at Berkeley, relocating to the East Coast, and she's replacing Beth Strowman, who retired last October. So it's auspicious timing since we are in the final phases of updating our sustainability plan overall, and she's going to be able to join us for that last kind of push to get it finalized and adopted. From a funding standpoint, we are seeing an increase of 2.5 million on customer investment funding due to the Exelon merger, and these funds will continue to provide and keep programs running that our Baltimore Energy Challenge has established for several years now with the help of earlier influx of these dollars. So the Community Engagement Program, the Baltimore Energy Challenge Energy Efficiency Program, and an Urban Heat Island Program for Cool Roof Installation. Planning is sort of the keeper of these funds, and HCD is mainly responsible for implementation in a partnership with Civic Works. And we also show on our performance measures here a pretty sizable increase in total area square feet of vacant lots greened, and some of that is due, a big part of it is an additional influx in Fiscal 16 of half a million dollars that we received from the Mayor's Office to kind of jumpstart a bunch of different greening efforts, and that was unanticipated money when we originally set the target. And the target should continue to move forward as we begin implementation of the city's Green Network Plan. Finally, under administration, our staffing remains at seven positions, and we also have a prominent new staff member who'll be joining us in this service or as part of our administration team and leadership team, and that's a new Assistant Director, Baltimore resident Stephanie Madden-Smith. She'll be starting in mid-July, and she will be leading department efforts around equity, engagement, and communications. Okay, so now moving on to the capital budget, I'll try to move through this quickly. The city capital budget is a companion to the operating budget, and combined they make up the annual ordinance of estimates, which requires adoption by City Council. Capital projects generally are one-time expenditures that have a minimum of a 15-year lifespan, and you're also allowed to charge studies and salaries directly related to the capital projects to capital project accounts. As a department and under the city charter, the Planning Department coordinates the development of the overall capital improvement program, which is actually a six-year program that looks ahead at agency needs. The overall process starts with the establishment of local fund source targets by the Finance Department, and then we work with the Mayor's Office to assign target ranges for CIP requests for each agency as they go through the request process. Our staff meets with agencies to understand the details and carefully reviews all those requests, and we make a recommendation for project funding to the Planning Commission, and they forward their recommendation to the Board of Finance and Board of Estimates for further review and approval of the six-year CIP. Then year one of that comes out and gets incorporated into the ordinance of estimates, and the remaining five years serve as a guide for future capital budgets. We use a number of criteria to evaluate the requests that come in, and I won't go through all of it, but whether they request support, a priority housing and economic development project, does a request implement one of the city's master plans, does it address the needs of Baltimore's most vulnerable residents and disadvantaged neighborhoods, does it leverage other fund sources, all those types of criteria. Again, there's also a wide variety of fund sources that we utilize in the capital improvement program. This highlights, slide highlights some of those key sources. It's really a combination of local, state, federal, and various other sources like enterprise funds and county grants for water and wastewater projects. This slide shows a overall trend of capital projects from, or capital fund sources and amounts from 2009 projected out to 2023, and as you can see, there's quite a bit of variability, and that mostly depends on when large typically public works projects receive infusions of funding and need to issue contracts. That can really escalate the overall totals for some of those fund sources. Drilling down a little bit to maybe what we consider the key local fund sources, which are city bond revenues in gold, city general funds in blue, and general funds that are part of the highway user revenue in the pink color, and transportation revenue bonds in green. So of particular note on this slide is really the sharp decline in the general funds highway user revenue from 2009. You can see a pretty sizable pink bar there on the left end, and it literally disappears for a couple of years, and then when those highway user revenues reappear, it's at a much lower level, and that all has to do with the state financial crisis we were going through, as well as our local financial crisis during the Great Recession. And the allocations just have not kept up with the needs of the city, so we've had to go more and more into using the green shaded block here, which are the transportation revenue bonds, to make up for that. And those are loan dollars that basically have to be paid back, so it's not quite as much of a boon as just getting outright highway user revenues. I'd also note that the general fund paygo in the light blue, you know, really remains a pretty small piece of the overall puzzle, and we wish it could be more, and hopefully with building the tax base and getting more residents in, we'll be able to make up for some of that over time and increase that blue. This pie chart shows a breakdown of capital fund sources for Fiscal 18. The vast majority comes from three of those fund sources, the brown color being revenue loans, which are mostly the water and wastewater funds, the blue being state funds, and the pink being other funds. And again, the vast majority of both state and other funds are devoted to water and wastewater projects, and here you can see how the funds get distributed, and the green Public Works is kind of gobbling up the rest of the circle there. And their DPW receives over three-quarters of the overall capital budget for the city. Of course, they have a lot of mandates that they're fulfilling right now. Next in line is Department of Transportation, which receives about 8% of funding, housing about 6% of the funding, then libraries and rec and parks for a much smaller amount, and everybody else receives 1% or less of the total for the capital funds. That said, there are, this slide depicts a number of capital budget highlights by category. Not sure if you want me to go through any of this at this point, happy to hit some highlights if you like. So under youth and families, we have 17 million going towards school renovations. That's our annual capital commitment for systemic projects primarily for existing schools, and this is in addition to our contributions from other fund sources for the 21st Century Schools Program, building 23 to 28 new schools. There's 7.1 million for recreation centers, and that includes Fred B. Leidig, Cherry Hill Recreation Center, K-Hill Rec Center, and some miscellaneous improvements to a variety of rec centers. We have $34 million for libraries. We'll be starting a renovation project for the Forest Park Branch Library, and the lion share, 32 million goes to the central library renovation that's underway. Most of that is state funding. There's 2.5 million to support planning projects and capital improvements around the new 21st Century Schools, and those are being prioritized through our Inspire Planning Healthy Communities and Safe Neighborhoods, $10 million for demolition, blight elimination, 5.7 for various redevelopment projects, including Uplands, O'Donnell Heights, and East Baltimore, and $1 million to help jumpstart implementation of the Green Network Plan. We also have $3 million in bond funds that establishes the new Affordable Housing Fund, and 3.5 million for increasing Baltimore homeownership incentives to be targeted throughout the city. 3 million for housing repair assistance for low-income families. 1.5 million for improvements to commercial corridors, including East-North Avenue and Pennsylvania and North Avenue. 1.2 million for cultural organizations, the zoo, the aquarium, et cetera, a range of larger and smaller cultural organizations. And then 1.3 million for business financing programs, including the Innovation Fund, the micro loan program, and commercial and industrial financing all through BDC. And finally, some infrastructure highlights, 22 million for street resurfacing across the city, 27 million for bridge replacement, 8 million for bike and pedestrian infrastructure, everything from sidewalks to the Pratt Street cycle track, Inner Harbor crosswalks, curb repairs, and ADA ramps citywide. And then finally, the big kahuna, 855 million in water, wastewater, and stormwater projects in DPW. So that concludes my presentation, be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Director Stosur. We've been joined by Councilman Scott, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Cohen. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm interested in the 22 million dollar in street resurfacing. When will we see that take place, and what streets will be resurfaced? If we can get that information, you don't have to talk about it now, I appreciate it. And then we're talking about 855 million in water and wastewater, stormwater projects. Is that in lieu to what the Water Department is doing, or is that new money?
This is, this are all for projects that have been programmed for some time, and it's, they're able to, with the revenue bonds that they issue that we all pay off, they're able to get this larger sums, yeah.
Okay, the 10 million for demolition, is that part of the money that the governor through the core program, is that?
This 10 million is all local dollars. It's GO bonds in general, the core money is in addition to that.
Okay, all right. This has nothing to do with the budget stuff, but it has a direct impact on the budget, UDAR. We need to really take a hard look at that, because when a developer come in to do a project, and they keep sending them back to go change this, to change that, that's money that they're spending. And a lot of times, like it was a project in East Baltimore where we in the community, we were okay with the design, we liked the way it looked, and they made them change it, and it's an ugly building now. That Department of Mental Health and Hygiene, that building is ugly as shit. Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I apologize. I'm sorry to the listening audience, I really apologize, that was a slip of the tongue, but it's ugly, you know? And when communities are on board with a certain project and they like the way it looks, why do UDAR go and say, "We don't like that, change this, change that, change that"? It drives up the cost. Developers don't want to do work in the city because they complain to us about UDAR all the time. And I know the advisory, is that correct? It's just advisory? So why do they have to even go there? It impacts, it impacts development in this city, and, you know, because I was going to ask the Land Use Committee to hold a hearing and call them in to ask them, what is really their function? Is their function to just, because they can say it, that, "We don't like this"? Are you putting any money in that project? I just wanted to make that comment, because they're driving away developers.
Yeah, I, you know, I have a very different view of it.
But I called you a couple of times.
Oh, I know, and about that building, I know. But I, you know, I think what we're trying to do as a department and as a city is elevate the standard of design so that we, you know, the projects that are being built will be here for 50 to 100 years, and in my mind, it's well worth an extra meeting or an extra kind of effort at the front end before any bricks are in the ground to try to get the absolute best project we can from a design standpoint. Design is very subjective, so the panel, which are, is made up of five architects and landscape architects who have done a variety of practice in Baltimore, as well as in DC, and Philly, and really all around the country, we, and this has been going on for decades, this kind of design review, and Baltimore is actually seen as a leader in some of this design review, and others come to us asking, and believe me, if develop, I'll have to say this, if developers didn't complain, our design review would not be doing its job, because part of it is to push them to make the best.
I understand that, Tom, but some of the stuff that they put up is ugly as dog poop. It's just ugly. I mean, I wrote and I looked at this stuff, and it doesn't make sense, and I'm like, what kind of architect would say that this is the standard, or this is the way it should look? It looks like poop.
Right, well, again, it ultimately, it's the developer, and it's really me to be held accountable because they just advise me, and that's fine, that's what I'm here for. And, but what you may be seeing is when, because UDARP is only advisory, a developer chooses not to take that advice and just builds the cheaper solution, and again, we have that then for 50 years.
Mr. President, on the bright side, if you wait 50 years, it will be historic poop, and it'll be classic and recognized, and by then it'll be taught in architectural programs as poop that should be preserved. But then, I was thinking about some other project.
No, I think I'm good on that.
We've been joined by Councilman Costello, and I apologize, somewhere along the line I've lost control of your committee. So Director Stosur, I have a couple of questions. So I'm not certain if you can answer this, but when we look at the capital budget, are there, is there a particular balance that we're trying to get as it relates to, you know, these areas of focus, whether it be, you know, youth and families, vibrant economy? And part of the reason I'm asking, it seems as though the capital budget is and can be a tremendous opportunity to spur development or economic, you know, vitality. So when we create this budget, do we, do we go in looking to have a certain percentage go to activities that will ultimately create revenue?
Well, I think it's important to note that many of the fund sources are very restrictive, and they tend to be the ones with the highest amounts behind them, but the water and wastewater projects, you can only spend those revenue bonds on water and wastewater infrastructure, and highway user revenue must be used in the right of way, and so there And so there's, there's a number of those that kind of drive, frankly, the vast majority of the budget. But if you look at that other chart about the local fund sources, this one, this is where we have more flexibility. But over time, because these fund sources have either sort of stagnated or at times been cut, it's become very difficult to kind of move a lot of change because agencies have depending on these dollars. And again, we look out six years, so we try to keep to that program as we look at future projects. So without new sources of revenue, it would be quite disruptive to do major shifts within those amounts to the ongoing functioning of various agencies.
Right.
Doesn't mean they can't do different types of projects, you know, within their missions. And, you know, that's, that's something that's worth to discuss. But it's hard to really say we co-proactively with a particular goal of balancing each of those, but it's, it's something we can look at going forward.
Yeah, I mean, and I could be off base. It just seems like capital dollars would be the opportunity where we could make strategic investments, either in infrastructure or whatever, for the purpose of creating greater revenue so that we could do, you know, other things. But if we, if, for, you know, lack of a better term, if we eat all of our seed, then we don't have any crops to grow. It might have been a bad analogy, but anyway, I think you got my point.
And we do try to do that. There's a, you know, we're putting, for instance, a lot of dollars into Uplands and O'Donnell Heights and East Baltimore specifically because they're places that I think are going to raise the tax base and bring in new homeowners and things like that. So we do look for those opportunities as often as possible.
Okay. My last question is in reference to, I think, Service 765. The 2.5 million from the CIF, is that, and maybe Mr. Klein can help me. Earlier, we heard from Housing in reference to, it was either 2.5, 2.6 for weatherization. Is this the same money, or is this different?
Yeah, there's about $7 million total. This was a second round of CIF funding. The city received, first round of funding, three-year, $53 million for various energy efficiency, weatherization projects. And that, that went through 2016. There was some funding that was unspent from, from that initial three-year award. And so a lot of, a lot of the activities continued. And then there was the second round of award, I think, I think it was funding that had been awarded but not used by the, not by us, but by other jurisdictions. And so we're fortunate to have some additional funding to keep some of the key projects going.
Okay. So it looks like, with the combination of the two, there's, you know, at least $5 million to go towards, you know, these types of projects?
Yeah. And we could provide a full list of the projects, the 7 million that's, that's in the budget, if you'd like.
I'm not sure what question number that is, but 57? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yesterday, this issue came up, so I wanted to kind of bring it back to, for school closures. When the, the question I had was around the clock starting for planning of those buildings once we know that they're slated for closure. There's two in my district that, one, I think, is slated to close in January, Rockwell Heights, and Sarum Roaches, a little bit later down the line. But a lot of questions I get for folks, especially with Rockwell Heights, is pending, is, you know, what becomes of the building? And DGS did mention that they take over security and securing the space, but in that it would, you know, they kind of walked us through the whole process. So I understand that portion of it. But is there an opportunity for community input if a city agency doesn't choose to select one of those buildings to kind of be a part of a visioning process? Or is that something that's completely in-house?
Now, there's definitely, community engagement is, is part of what we would do for any site that does get surplused. Now, it is a complex process, and it's really driven by city schools. And they, the school board makes a decision about closing a program or having a particular school program cease to operate. But it's a separate decision for them to decide to close a building that a school's in. And often, they will close a program but continue to use a building, at least for a few years, as swing space as they renovate other schools. So just because a school program is going to stop, it doesn't necessarily mean the school system is immediately going to surplus the property. But once they do take that vote and decide to surplus it, and we know that schedule is firm, we want to start as soon as possible with the community engagement side.
And what does that, the community engagement, look like?
Well, what we are going to start to do with this initial set of schools that are already in the city's inventory and that are not otherwise spoken for is bring stakeholders together, working through the community associations and any of the area institutions, and do an initial meeting that kind of just lays out the process, has an opportunity for folks to ask questions about what's happening, about timing, or who controls what, and how security is going to take place while a building might be empty. And then we want to get into a discussion at those meetings of what is the community priorities for the site? Do they want to keep the building and just see it reused? Or would they prefer to see the building demolished and a totally new use go in? What types of new uses, whether it's in the present building or in a new set of structures, would they want to see? Do they want open space preserved? And just kind of go through a whole menu of questions and start that dialogue. And we would, then, the, the goal is to take the findings from those discussions. And when we are prepared to perhaps issue or request for proposals, to see who might be interested, whether it's a for-profit developer, or a nonprofit, or an institution, make sure they're aware of what those community priorities are as well as they, you know, consider what they might want to do with that. And maybe there's a way to get private development to happen, get a property back on the tax rolls, but also have some community use set aside in a space as well. And each property is unique, each neighborhood is unique. So there is no kind of cookie cutter approach we're going to be able to take for this, so.
No, that's helpful. Because I, one of those schools, I walk my dog by a lot, and so I'm always getting questions about process. So it's helpful to know that there, one, will be community input. And that way, I can also, as I'm doing my dog walks, kind of walk people through what that'll look like, if we get to that point. That was all I had. Thank you.
The time is about 7:20. I know we started a little late. It is our, our hope to end this session by 7:30. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Stosur, and to all your team for your, your hard work. I want to ask you a few questions about the capital budget, because I think that for the services you guys do, you guys do a great job of working for the city of Baltimore. And I want to start with the council president, I actually started on the infrastructure and the 22 million in street resurfacing. Because basically, I want to fact-check something the Department of Transportation said yesterday. So for the past few years, we, I've been having this dialogue with them because we found out that in my district and a few others, 3, 4, 10, and 5, there are actually streets that are concrete in neighborhoods, and they can't be resurfaced with asphalt, they have to be resurfaced with concrete. And it was explained to us that they, through the capital budget, have increased that amount, their request to, to do that. I wanted to see if that's true. Can you provide to us a line item, what the Department of Transportation is requesting for their infrastructure? And to see if slab replacement is something that has grown over the last few fiscal years? Because we want to make sure that that's happening. Because if you talk to the average citizen, there is really no difference between, for them, in their street being concrete or asphalt. But of course, for us, we know that concrete, yes, it lasts a lot longer, but it also costs a lot more to do. One block is about $150,000, where you can do a whole block or four or five blocks in asphalt for about $10,000 or $20,000. So I want to see where that's going. I know they've made improvements in that, but I think that it's something, and it's not, nothing bad against them. We want to see if they're making that request, because if we can get them more money to do that, then they can spread that out. Especially since when they do a particular street, they don't have to touch it for like 30, 40, 50 years.
Sure. We can do a little research and see specifically what the request history has been and the funding history for that category.
Yep. And then staying on the capital budget, so when we look at the recreation centers, right? And I think that, of course, as you know, as a former employer of recreational parks, I think that the plan that we have for redeveloping the rec centers across the city is a, is a great one. But I want to know what other factors, I think that Councilman Pinkin hinted at, what other factors are we talking about when we consider these rec centers? So for me, and this is what we suggested when I was at Wreckin Parks in Central City with this council, I think that we have to start to look at the reality that we have limited resources, especially when it comes to things like that in rec centers. We also have a finite amount of children. Are we considering, when Wreckin Parks submits a request to the, to the planning department for capital funding for a recreation center, are we looking at things like, you know, census data on how many kids actually live in the neighborhood that that rec center is in? Because it would seem to me, in the case where you have very limited dollars, that we would start to try to have some focus on how we can get our most bang for our buck. But when you look at the census data in recent years, it doesn't seem that that's holding true. Some of the places that we're spending all of this money, we're seeing a trend of not many kids living, living there. Not to say that they shouldn't have nice things, but I think there has to be some balance in trying to focus on areas where we want to attract people, or to, you know, build up new things, but also to keep people and meet the services where people are. So I'm not going to go build a new senior building in a, in a neighborhood that has all 20-year-olds, all millennials. We should think the same way when it comes to young people in recreation centers.
Yeah. And we, we work pretty closely with Wreckin Parks throughout the year and when they make their requests. And the planning commission, as they review requests, asks a lot of these same questions. We have been going by the most recent, you know, master plan for rec centers and aquatics that had a lot of data and expertise put into it. And so that has been the vision, and generally, that has meant maybe bigger rec centers that have a wider catchment area, and maybe kids don't live within a quarter mile of it, but it would serve as a sort of center that a lot of folks can go to. But I, it's, it's always a debate, especially when you have limited resources, about where you should invest first.
So let me try to clarify that a bit. So I absolutely agree with that approach. I think that that's the approach that we, we should have. We shouldn't have rec centers built on top of each other because they're competing for the same children. I think that, I always used to give the example, even when I worked at Wreckin Parks, when we were developing the plan, we, I gave the example of, I used to go to every rec center in Park Heights because they were all within walking distance, right? I basically went to whichever one that day was having the athletic program that I wanted to do. Typically, that was either track or basketball for me. But what I'm saying is, even in that model, if you look at some of the places where we built the larger model, we still aren't, aren't building it in an area where there's, even in that larger catchment area, where there's a significant amount of children. And I think that we have to look at that as we're moving forward to make sure that we're reaching, even in a mile radius, the most children that we can when we have that opportunity. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Councilman Henry?
I got one more, one more. And this is just, and you can add this to the question, the question list. This is just an annual ask. I know that Councilman Costello would ask if he was here. If you could just provide for the council, by councilmatic district, the list of the capital projects for fiscal 18 for the committee?
Sure. And that'd be question 58. List of capital projects. You're good. Councilman Henry?
So actually, I need to begin by saying that I respectfully disagree with my colleague in terms of how we should be determining where recreation facilities go. Amenities in a community like a recreation center can help drive demographic trends as well. If you have a neighborhood with a great functioning rec center, then you're going to increase the chances that families with kids are going to move into that neighborhood. It will draw more kids. One of the things that I think we've suffered from over the last generation is we have starved the recreation centers, and then we've used the fact that they're ill-kept and ill-staffed as the reason not to give them more stuff, because we have taken away their ability to do any type of real outreach to their communities, and we've made it harder as we've closed them in this semi-arbitrary fashion. We've made it harder for kids to get to the ones that they can't immediately walk to. And so now they're not coming to them, even though the kids are there to, and desire recreation. But we should probably have a separate hearing on that, and I shouldn't be taking up capital budget time on that. A couple of quick questions. On the fund source trends chart, select sources, yeah, that one. This is really just sort of a curiosity. If I went back four or five years and asked to see this chart from five years ago, would the next five years look as flat as the next five years look on this chart? Is it, I mean, the last five years weren't flat, but this chart seems to project that the next five years will be flat. And I'm just curious as to, is that a budget, is that a planning convention that you assume it's going to be flat, and then you wait for circumstances to change it?
I think it would reflect a fairly conservative budget approach from the Bureau of the Budget, yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm going to...
But those fund sources would be flat.
Fair point. Okay. Because I can, I'm looking at the, the all, the all funds.
Okay.
And I recognize that that is not as flat as that looks. The second question, also a pretty straightforward one. Are hard copies of the full six-year plan available? Or is that just online?
I think we've moved to just online, but if anybody needs a hard copy...
It was, it was only a question of, we checked with the president's office, and we thought that the council used to get one, and no one has seen it yet for this year.
Okay.
And I get that they're like, yeah, okay. So, but, but they are, it is available online.
Correct.
Okay. At full detail, all six years.
Correct.
Okay. That's going to be important, because the third thing, and I was particularly taken with your quote, "The projects we're building will be here for 50 to 100 years." I was taken with that because I'm dealing with the situation at Walter P. Carter where I have a standalone, I'm sorry, a connected rec center. It's connected to the school, and an in-ground pool, outdoor pool, neither of which is 50 years old, and both of which are about to be knocked down because the school system has come up with a scheme for rebuilding Walter P. Carter. And the only feasible scheme that they can imagine is one that involves knocking down the existing rec center and digging up the existing in-ground pool. Rebuilding the standalone rec center is probably not going to be necessary, given the ability to use shared space inside the new school. It looks like the neighborhoods will actually come out with a net gain in available programming space, and I think that's a good thing. There's operational details to be worked out, but that's not your problem. But the pool is, because that is the only public pool in North Baltimore between Roosevelt Park, which is over 1.7 miles to the west, and Lake Clifton, which is two miles to the east.
And there's nothing north.
There's not, yeah, there's not, and there's nothing between... There's not, yeah, and there's nothing between there and the city-county line. So that, that pool needs to be rebuilt. And I'm trying to get it across to the administration that it is absolutely ridiculous to expect the community to sign off on a feasibility study that calls for the pool going away without a commitment that it's going to be rebuilt. Now, I understand that that commitment can't be made this, mainly, that commitment can't be for this year, because this budget is set.
Right.
But that commitment needs to be in the next fiscal capital budget to rebuild that pool. And how do we, how do we make that assurance now that if we're going to knock down this school and rebuild it for good and wonderful reasons, that we do not take an entire section of the city offline in terms of aquatics?
Yeah, I'm probably not in a position to be able to give you any direct assurances or guarantees tonight, but we're aware of the issue. I'm glad to hear about the progress on the rec center part and the shared space. I think that's, that's pretty key.
In all fairness to any of my constituents who are watching this online or on TV, it's possible that I have moved through the stages of grief faster than some of them have.
Understood, yeah. But, you know, we have a number of sort of back-and-forth issues with the school system on these various 21st century sites, and, you know, they're under a mandate to do what they're gonna do on a timeline, and, you know, hopefully fulfilling that mandate will position the city for maybe another round of funding to be able to...
Are there other examples of instances where the school system is eliminating another city asset in the course of rebuilding or expanding a school? Such that, because I will say, my reading of the state requirements for how they can spend the 21st century money allows for the opportunity for them to spend it on something that has an educational purpose, which a year-round aquatics facility would legitimately have.
Right.
But is there, could, could the planning department be of assistance in convincing the school system that that would be a reasonable way to spend some of the budget for rebuilding Walter P. Carter?
I certainly think we could be of assistance in raising it as a discussion point for consideration, and I think your, your main partner will need to be Recreation and Parks and its...
They're next.
New director.
They're, they're, they're tonight. Don't worry. This is just practice, I'm warming up. The very, very last question is speaking to the issue of surpleasing school buildings. We have been working under the assumption that you've now made me a little nervous that maybe this was just an assumption, that when Guilford Elementary Middle was the, when the school board voted to close the program a few years back, specifically so that they could justify rebuilding Walter P. Carter bigger to combine the zones, we've been working under the assumption that the decision was made at that point to surplus the building. Do you know if that is true or not?
I believe, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that it is in Exhibit 6 as a planned surplus...
Yeah, okay.
...at a future date. We just don't start our planning process until the board actually takes the vote and says, you know, it's not just a plan, it's an actual decision.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so it is conceptual, but it is not formal yet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's approximately 7:35. If possible, I'd like to start the next session on green infrastructure at about 7:45, or about that, if possible. But next, we have questions from Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the Harford Senior Center. This, I've been told, is a top priority for the Health Department for their capital interests. And they received a $500,000 bond from the state this year in order to make improvements to the building. And I have not been, I have not been able to have the conversation with DGS yet about this, but my understanding is that there was a commitment of $600,000 in capital from DGS on this. Is this, and I don't see this in the plan for capital improvements. You sent me a list of, we've, the city has owned this building since, only since 2015, and put about 130-some thousand into improvements back then, and has had Gedco operating...
Okay.
...the senior center since then. And Gedco is kind of ready to walk away from it if the building is not improved significantly, which is why we got this $500,000 bond from the state, but it was supposed to go together with this $600,000 from DGS. And now DGS apparently is saying that they're not gonna ask for that money until 2020. And in the interim, Gedco is gonna walk away. I'm trying to gather as much information as I can about this to ensure that this, the only, much like Bill's is the only pool in this part of town, this is the only senior center in northeast Baltimore, and it serves a large part of the population, so...
Yeah, I, I was aware of some immediate improvements happening a couple of years ago with city funds. I don't know that I was aware of the state bond that was just approved. And I'm not sure who is getting, is it Gedco getting it, or is it the city that is the recipient of the bond?
So it's, it's, the Health Department went after it and is in a position of having to decide whether to spend it or not, because if it doesn't get the building into a state that satisfies Gedco's interest in continuing to operate there, and the building then leaves the control of the Health Department, then we would end up having to pay back that bond money to the state. And DGS is saying that the Health Department will need to come up with $40,000 just to get an assessment of what could be done with some amount of money, that they're not sure whether they have 500,000 or whether they have 1.1 million. And I'm trying to track the state of this alleged $600,000 commitment from the city.
Well, we'll have to confer with DGS, do our research on previous appropriations. This isn't something I'm aware of that's been targeted in the last year or two for, on the DGS side.
That's what I found in looking at the capital plan also.
Okay. So we'll, if we can, get back to you with details on that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. My question, it's Service 765. It's actually Page 317. Just a quick question under line four, materials and supplies. I see that in 2017, it was 3,500, but in 2018, it's only $150 for materials and supplies, and I'm wondering, wow.
Which page did you say that was on?
It's 317, under volume two. So it's Page 317, Service 765...
Okay.
...under line out of four, materials and supplies. And I'm like, what are you buying for $150? I'm just curious, because before it was so much more than that, and then it's only 150.
I've imposed an austerity budget on that, no. It's, I'll have to look into that. I'm pretty sure it's probably a little massaging of making sure really important things are getting the dollars they need and stuff where we can, don't, don't let Director Klein hear, but, you know, steal from Peter to give to Paul amongst the services. We're probably doing a little bit of that.
Okay.
Holding you to that, $50.
Right, that's crazy. That's, that was my only question.
Well, thank you, Director Stosier, and thank you and your team. We'll end this session on the Department of Planning, All Services, and Capital Budget, and we'll immediately transition to the next session, which is green infrastructure.